Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for attending and welcome to this meeting of the Finance Committee. Today's meeting is open to the public, the meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Please can I request all mobile telephones and other such equipment to be switched on to silence. There is no fire alarm planned for today. If there's an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from Town Hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. I would like to remind anyone attending a speaking today that we are in pre-election restricted period. This means that the council has to be especially aware of the legal duty not to publish any material that may be seen to favour a candidate or party oral election. There's also a requirement to ensure government policy is presented in a balanced and even-handed manner. Publicity is given wide meaning and includes matters set in the council hosted meetings. I therefore require everyone speaking today to confine their questions and comments to those strictly necessary to conduct the business on the agenda and not to stray into incidental related matters that might breach the publicity restrictions. Okay. For the benefit of the webcast, I'll introduce myself again and then I'll ask each Finance Committee member to introduce themselves. So I'm Zahira Nas, I'm a member for the Dornall Ward and I'm Chair of the Finance Committee. Over to you, Mary.
I'm councillor Mary Lee and I'm substituted for Gareth Slater.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Eldot from Manakessel.
Good afternoon, Glynnis Chapman, councillor for Mosborough Ward.
Good afternoon, Mike Leverie, councillor for West Ecclesfield and Vice Chair of Finance.
Good afternoon, my name's Diane Hurst, I'm a councillor in Richmond Ward and I'm here today substituting for councillor Terry Fox.
Hi, I'm Martin Phillips, I'm City Ward councillor and I'm the Green Group spokesperson on this committee.
Thank you very much. Officers can introduce themselves when they are presenting. Item number one, apologies for absence, so that's councillor Terry Fox and councillor Gareth Slater and maybe councillor Abdul Qiyum, councillor Leverie and councillor Shafak Mahami, thank you very much. Item two, exclusions of press and public, there is no item on the agenda today that is excluded, so it's open to the public. Item number three, is there any declarations of interest? No, thank you. Item number four, this is on page 11 of your agenda pack and it's minutes after previous meeting. Can I ask members to approve as a correct record? Yep, thank you very much, that's approved. Item number five, which is a work programme in your pack, you can find that on page 15 of the agenda pack and I'll pass it over to Fiona, thank you.
Thank you. As councillors will be aware, this is the first meeting of the new municipal year, so this is an opportunity for us to kind of lay out the year ahead in terms of the decisions that we want to discuss and obviously any other items relating to this committee. There are a number of items on the work programme for the coming year, however, the first couple of meetings that are down there, June, obviously today's meeting and July's meeting are better populated than the meetings in future. So as ever, this is an opportunity for members to mention anything that they think should be covered on the work programme, perhaps something that has been discussed in the previous year that hasn't been discussed formally yet.
Thank you Fiona. And you can email in any thoughts as well. Okay, so there are recommendations for approval on this, are we all okay with the work programme? Yep, that's fine, thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, which is the capital approvals for month 1, 23/24 and this is on page 17 of the agenda pack. Over to you Damian.
Thank you, I'm Damien Watkinson, I'm the Finance Manager in the capital team, presenting the changes, proposed changes to the capital programme for this month that have come through the approvals process. As usual, I'll run through them by a policy committee area and then I'll refer to the recommendations at the end to approve the various changes to the budget. So under transport regen and climate change, we have got a contribution from our local neighbourhood complementary transport programme to a cycle hub at Meadow Hall, which has been delivered by Northern Rail. The overall project's around 150,000 and we are making a contribution alongside Northern Rail and other parties to the delivery of that scheme. We are also increasing the budget to install residential cycle parking, so cycle hangars on street, following a trial during the Crooks and Walkley Active Travel Neighbourhood Scheme. So there will be 12 odd street facilities for people who don't have those within their home to store cycles to encourage active travel. Then we have the levelling up fund Castle Site, so this is the main project under levelling up at Castle, at the Castle Site. The initial allocation in this programme for this scheme was 13.4 million, the scheme is now going to cost around 19.6 million. The majority of this has been secured from gain share funding from the Combined Authority, but it will need a further 1.7 million of levelling up funds, which means we may need to seek additional funding to deliver the other works at the Market Tavern and Mudford Site, but that work is still ongoing to establish the costs of those works. So that is to get on and start delivering now that big massive public realm investment down at the Castle Site. Under community parks and leisure, part of a species survival grant, which is, the acceptance of which has been at this committee before, part of this is to make an £86,000 grant to the Sheffield and Rotherham Wildlife Trust to deliver some of the works under this programme. They were joint bidders with us for the works, Sheffield the accountable body, and it was part of the bid that they would undertake some of these works, so we're going to make that grant to them to allow that. The work at Hanover Multi-Use Games Area is feasibility's finished and moving on to delivery stage of that, so there's £70,000 being invested in that site. The youth investment fund works that were to upgrade youth facilities, one of the sites, the Milan Centre, is actually being leased to another body who's going to undertake more significant upgrades to that centre than we would have been able to do under this grant regime, so we're just reducing the budget by 21k that would have been spent on that centre and they'll be looking into how we can potentially reuse that funding on maybe some of the other sites. Under housing, there's been an increase in 80k costs at the Manor Older Person's Independent Living Site where we're doing fire prevention works, additional works required in the roof voids have increased costs by around 80k. Under education, children and families, we've secured a further roughly £230,000 funding from the Department for Education to deliver seven small scale improvements at Old Dean House, so those works will be delivered on that site. And at Forge Valley School, we're making a grant of up to 550,000 for them to expand places on a temporary basis at first on that site to include the increased applications that they receive at that site and the overall growing secondary population in that area. We're developing a children's home on the Rushy Meadows Site, the initial placement of that building has proved to be not workable, so there's been an increase of around 80k on that project, having to look at moving it to a slightly different area of the site overall. Strategy and resources, which relates to the essential compliance and maintenance of the corporate estate, we've got feasibility works undergoing at three sites, largely regarding water management and so at Hindwheel Dam at Rivlin, Encliff Park and Crooks Valley Park, there's been damage to walkways, footpaths and retaining walls caused by flood damage and increased water levels, so there's a significant investment in feasibility about what we need to do to rectify these issues, so I expect to see quite a significant investment coming forward in future months once the investigation is taken place and it's clear which paths we need to take on those. Also moving to delivery stage is the new LED lights at the town hall, we secured government funding to replace all lighting in the town hall with energy efficient lighting, which could save up to £50,000 a year. That will be used to repay the funding that we've received over the first couple of the years and then that saving will accrue back to the corporate funds. I think, yes, under essential compliance as well, there's been some, we've put in place the ring fence, earmarked reserves, ring fence reserves around maintenance of the corporate estate, so one made up of revenue contributions that have been made and one from capital receipts that have been allocated for that purpose. We're adding some more funds into those based on the end of year closed down of certain projects, so where savings have been accrued, we're putting those back into those allocations, ready to be drawn down for other projects. And finally, on the changes to the programme, the UK Shared Prosperity Fund had a low carbon fund, which was providing grants to small medium enterprises, we're adding in year two of the allocation that's coming from the Combined Authority for that, to bring that fund up to its full value. Also, at this time of year, we bring forward the changes that are a result of the close down of the year-end programme, so in Appendix Two, there's a summary of the overall changes to the 24/25 programme that are a result of closing year-end, so slippage, reprofiling of budgets, et cetera, so all that information is included at Appendix Two, there's a lot of detail in there, we refer to every capital scheme and how it's out-earned, so one of the recommendations is that the changes to the 24/25 budget that are as a result of slippage and reprofiling are also accepted as part of this report. There are two other appendices, one is to accept a grant from the Combined Authority for 3.5 million to deliver the Transforming Cities Fund South West Bus Corridors Scheme and finally to make the grant to Forge Valley School to deliver the works to expand places that I referred to earlier. That's my whistle-stop tour of those.
Thank you very much. Damian, councillor Phipps?
Thank you Chair. Just on the Castle Gate item, well, a couple of things, but firstly on the Castle Gate item, I just wanted to say, although it's obviously not good that costs are increasing, it's understandable in the national context, and I think it is good that as a council we are ensuring that the funding enables us to continue works like the full decouverting of the river, so that's why actually despite the costs increasing, I think it's good that we're putting the extra money in to make sure that takes place, because I know that's something stakeholders are keen on and that'll also be of benefit to local residents too, so I just wanted to thank that piece of work. And then on the Salix funding of LEDs in the town hall, I think this is really good and I do think it'd be good as a council if we look at how we could perform similar schemes, maybe as an invest to save or a borrow to save, where, because the Salix funding is just a lump sum, isn't it, basically 0% interest, we pay it back, we could do something similar either from our own revenue or our own reserves or from another source of funds. I think that's something we should really look at, because as well as being good for our costs, also good for the environment if we're improving installation of our council buildings. And then I've just got a last question, if that's okay, just on Encliff Park, Crooks Valley Park and the Hindwheel Dam, I'm just a bit curious why they've come from S and R instead of the Community Parks and Leisure, because they seem quite like parks related. Thank you.
Yeah, so I would say on the energy efficiency matter, on lighting, there are a few projects currently at feasibility stage that are using the, looking at community buildings, particularly so starting off that work and a couple on schools as well, so there are some projects in the pipeline at feasibility stage at the moment that we'll push on. The maintenance of the sort of corporate estate, as it were, it does fall betwixt and between and I think the parks and leisure tend to focus on sort of like literally the park areas and the leisure strategy, whereas this is more around, I think, the footpaths and the ways between certain areas and it just has been managed by our, you know, corporate repairs, maintenance team generally, so I think that's just more of a functional management issue rather than it falling into any particular policy area.
Thank you and thanks for the report.
Thank you councillor Chapman.
All right, thank you Chair, yeah, just I've got a couple of points. On page 29, the use investment small sites, I was going to ask you what's going to happen to the 21.5 that's been taken out, but I confirmed that you are looking at other plans to use that money and it will be utilised. And my other question is about on page 59, which is PEAKS post 16 send provision. I know that we spent £112,000 on a feasibility study at PEAKS College to provide this send education. I have had an update, otherwise at a light meeting, but now to see that everything's been delayed while the academy trust now do a different feasibility study, I'm rather worried that they're going to be coming to us for more money and I hope that's not going to be the case. Because we've already spent quite a bit of money upgrading, updating the college to provide send education for 300 pupils and in this first year, we're only going to take in 50 new ones anyway, so I don't know why they've slowing everything down and doing another feasibility study themselves.
As I understand it, position on that one is that originally we, as the council, we're going to carry out the refurbs, but the college are going to carry out that. That will be, I mean, a matter for, I know there's speaking closely, the team managing, the commissioning team are in close dialogue with PEAKS, with Sheffield College, sorry. So yeah, we wouldn't expect to see a larger, you know, request for funding, but that will be managed by the relationship between the commissioning team and Sheffield College.
Right, okay, watch this, watch this space there. Thank you.
Councillor Leverie?
Thanks Chair. Back to Castle Gate again, are we an end date for the scheme, do we know, roughly? And I'm expecting it will be coming back again because there'll be further funding required, I suspect. We've already mentioned the Mudford Scheme and that sort of thing. Have we got any surety on the costs at this stage?
The capital delivery service team have, you know, done their best, made their best efforts on this and there are, we've mentioned, there are provisional sums in there, particularly around some of the decouverting works and some of the archaeological works where we're not certain yet, because until we actually start removing some, you know, doing some of the excavation works, it's not going to be entirely clear. So people are aware of, you know, those issues and yeah, if those, if there is requiring for additional funding, then there's, that will come through, you know, this committee and we'll keep monitoring the forecasting on that. The levelling up fund, funding has to be used by March 26. I will can double check what the expected end date for this scheme is, but I know they're looking toward that contract as soon as possible and so we're expecting, because it's been a two-stage award, so the contract's already on site and has performed enabling works, so it's not like we're waiting to appoint another contractor, it should be a seamless transition from the stage one to stage two, so we should see works progressing quite quickly. So I'll find out what the latest programme is and get back to you.
Okay, thanks. And one other point on the Forge Valley temporary expansion, I understand the funding and the reasons why, if that becomes permanent in terms of an expansion, in other words, the numbers don't go down and therefore the provision needs to be made, how is that financed at that stage to put a permanent solution in? Is that to be done by a local authority?
It will be, yes, well, it's the statutory duty of the local authority to ensure there's sufficient places, so it would become, it could become an additional call on funds if we need to, if the method that's being used, it's been quite, it's had to move at pace and that's been one of the reasons why, it's been the trust are delivering the works. So yeah, there is potential that if we need to expand further or, you know, make that provision more permanent, there will be further expenditure required, but this was required in order to be able to meet the intake that's expected in September, so that's why they've had to move at pace at this and why we're saying it's up to this amount at the moment, we possibly won't be that amount, but we need to get an approval in place that would allow that, those places to be available in September.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hurst?
Thanks Chair. Thanks for your report Damian. It's, yeah, the answer to this question probably exists in there, there are evil and I just don't know the answer to it, because I'm a new substitute to this committee, but most of the reports that we've had have been about, we've got to change some allocation of monies because the costs of this have gone up or the feasibility has revealed greater, you know. So I want to ask about the UK Shared Prosperity Fund Low Carbon Capital Fund and the addition to that. It's described as a project providing carbon sustainability audits, which will provide an audit of the SME operation establishing the carbon emissions of current operation and interventions that will reduce these. So it's kind of like a pre-project to enable businesses to bid for something that will reduce their carbon emissions. Given the way that we've heard that all costs are going up, how, where was the project plan approved for this? Do we have a timeline for this and when are we actually going to get into delivery, I think is what my questions are.
I think that's something I could take back to the team who are running the grant scheme. I think actually it's not just audits, there is some delivery as part of these grants as well. The audit part of it is, like you said, the initial stage, but then I think there is also an element which is based around, you know, delivery of interventions, but I'll get, I can get the detail from the team who are operating, running the loan scheme.
Great, thank you. Thank you councillor El.
Thank you Chair, thank you for your report. As a new councillor to this committee, I was interested to note in Appendix Two that there's quite a lot of variance in the net slippage at the year-end and I wondered if you could share with us your assessment of whether there's a significance across the committees to the variance in the slippage and whether there's any sort of trends or patterns you think we should be aware of in comparison to how this might have been in previous years, just so that we can, we can understand the risks that might be underneath that. Thank you.
What I'd say is actually there's the out-urn report that I'm going to discuss as an appendix to the next report and that's when I'll discuss that, so hopefully when I come on to do that, after Jane's done the revenue out-urn, I'll discuss the capital out-urn and yeah, that's, they're the issues I intend to address there, so if that's okay, I'll pick you up then.
Councillor Don, is that all right? I think you will cover it into, in the next presentation. Okay, so thank you very much for that, there is any further questions or comments? I just have to mention, sorry, on page 27, I have a personal interest to declare in regard to the species survival grant, but I actually work for Sheffield Rotherham Wildlife Trust. Okay, so I just put that on record. Thank you, so moving on to the recommendations, so this, this report has recommendations for approval, are we all agreed? Yep, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven, which is the final out-urn position, 23/24, and this you can find on page 93 of the agenda pack. Over to you Jane.
Thank you Chair. Jane Bulby, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting. So for this one, we're going back in time to 23/24, so Damian's just on the update for month 1, 24/25, but the paper gives an update of the final out-urn position for 23/24 and all of the policy committees get a shortened version of this one in each one of their meetings that are coming up, which includes the council overview as well. It's also worth noting that the final position was included in the council's annual statement of accounts, which was submitted in line with statutory deadlines on the 31st of May and we are proud to be in the 41% of councils that met this deadline for a consecutive year. It's also worth noting that this paper is different to the usual quarterly update because it asks for some recommendations in the notes, which I'll go through in a minute, about carryforwards of budgets. Okay, so the council overspent by 15.6 million in 23/24 against a net revenue budget of 497 million, which was a variance of 3.1%. In the quarters, we indicated in the first quarter an overspend of 17.6 million, which improved by 2 million throughout the year. So the relative stability in the forecasting showed a good commitment of council officers to financial management and realistic estimates of service costs. The improvement of the 2 million was largely due to corporate underspends through sustained improvements in our interest income from treasury management activities, more detail on that is included in the treasury management out-urn paper in Appendix Two. The provided, so this did provide mitigations for 6 million for our increasing unfunded overspends. The challenging underlying budget issues remain for the council, has done for the rest of the year in children's services, SEN transport, adults' care and wellbeing and homelessness. The adult service overspent by 2.7 million and they continue to be challenged by high costs of packages and underlying issues in learning disabilities budgets of 10.5 million pounds. Some of that was offset through one-off funding in the year. The children's services were 12.7 million overspent, they've been faced with increasing costs of external residential placements and persistent demand for SEN home-to-school transport. We're now supporting over 2,444 children in the city with transport provision, which has increased by almost 1,000 children in four years. The homelessness situation has arisen due to our use of hotel and bed and breakfast accommodation to support homelessness duties, where a shortage of affordable housing in the city has pushed families and single people to crisis point. Government legislation around housing benefit rules mean that the council is subsidising the cost of this provision without any funding or available budget, leading to an overspend of 8.4 million that sits between temporary and supported accommodation, all areas affecting the general fund. In the housing revenue account, there was a 5.2 million overspend. The biggest issue that we face in the housing revenue account is, relates to overspends in repairs and maintenance budgets. The overspend was 7.7 million in housing repairs and maintenance against a budget of 47 million, which is over 16%, largely due to increases in equipment, materials and subcontractor costs. The chart on page 119 shows a split of the HRA budget in comparison to 22/23. Last year, they had an uplift of 7.8 million in their budget and the spend is still almost 5 million pounds higher than it was in the previous year. Overall, the council put in place 47 million pounds of budget savings plans to balance the budget for 23/24, of which 78% were delivered. Six and a half million were deemed undeliverable and will present a risk to budgets in 24/25 alongside budget challenges of 26.7 million, as noted in table 1.6.2. One-off grant income offsets some of the, and provisions have provided some mitigation for these core issues that do need to be addressed in order for us to be sustainable going forward and the majority of those issues are in the three key overspending areas, adults, children's and homelessness. Next year's service budget savings commitment commits services to saving almost 8 million in improvements out of a 42 million target, so whilst the total is lower, it does become more and more difficult each year as we've got more savings to achieve on previous years. The issues that we've got here in Sheffield are not unique and councils are facing similar challenges and contexts of uncertainty over future funding streams. The council managed to be able to manage these overspends by drawing from reserves for the past three financial years. 70 million was set aside in 21 for budget contingency and to date, we will have 27.6 million to manage overspends into 24/25. We're currently in the process of refreshing our medium-term financial analysis and we'll begin the process of setting a balanced budget for 24/25/26. Pressures on services from increased demand, inflating cost bases and reductions to funding on top of undelivered savings and issues with underlying budget gaps will make the process more difficult this year as the gap continues to widen. So as noted, the paper includes recommendations to carry forward some unspent budgets from 23/24 in three areas and the out-urn position assumes the agreement of these. The items are detailed in section 1.16 in the paper, which include 277,000 for local area committees and the majority of this relates to projects and activities that are in place within the LAX that span within the LAX that span financial years. They do include an element of roll forward from funding from 2223. There is a 70k training in youth services, which was part of their commitment to their strategic goals. And there was an inability to complete this within 2324 due to sickness within the service. There was also 899,000 Market Sustainability Investment Fund for care providers for adults, which really, which relates to commitments that have been made. And the terms and conditions of the grant meant that we needed to have those spent within the year. So we have made a substitution to make sure that we can fulfil our commitments that we'd made as part of that grant agreement. It should be noted that these three are exceptional circumstances and any other carryforward requests have been refused in recognition of the council's overall financial position. So the paper does include three appendices. The capital monitoring position, which I'll hand to Damian to talk you through in a minute. The treasury out turn position, which summarises the up to the period to the end of March and the potential implications for revenue budgets. And it also sets out the indicators that are covered, that are required to satisfy the council's Prudential Code, Treasury Management Code of Practice obligations. Appendix Three talks about our reserves position. So just to note that this is the usable reserves position and it stands at 289 million. And it moved from the prior year, which was 321 million. It is worth saying that whilst these are usable reserves, they're also earmarked for specific purposes. The budget contingency reserve sits at 27.6 million, as noted earlier. Even though Sheffield's total usable reserves have fallen by 31.9 million over the last two years, peer benchmarking shows that they are high and one of the highest in the eight core cities as a percentage of net revenue budget at 60.8%. The same declining trend in reserves can be seen across all local authorities, but the evidence shows that while Sheffield's reserves to net revenue budget ratio is falling, it's not falling as fast in other core cities in similar situations. So I'll just pass to Damian to talk through the capital monitoring Appendix One.
Thanks Jane. So it's just to set me a context, so capital budgets obviously operate slightly differently to revenue ones, as in individual projects come forward through the year, like you've seen today. And you see them at this committee. And the projects aren't tied to financial years. But obviously, you know, the financial year is still a good yardstick for measuring how we're delivering. So the report sets out in the outlines, and obviously it'll start to address some of the questions you were thinking. Still a very challenging situation in terms of supply chain, labour market, high levels of demand that are still being released after Covid. So there's lots of funding being released by, capital funding being released by government that all local authorities are trying to deliver on at once. So the demand is, is very high. Inflation in the construction sector remains high. And talking to my manager, who's the Chair of the Regional Group for Procurement, it's, it's contractors' market at the moment and all, all local authorities are in a similar position. There was a, the local authority treasuries group did a survey and 70% of local authorities reported substantial slippage in capital programmes. And a couple of articles have been published recently. So Exeter managed to spend 8.5 million out of 70 last year. And Devon managed 158 out of 268 million. So the context is generally, it's, it's difficult at the moment to get capital spending out of the door. To be honest, in that context, we, we achieved 179 million pounds out of what at year end was a budget of 218 million. So quite a substantial investment. The budget started much higher than that at the start of the year. But it's clear that this wasn't going to be achievable. The factors on it really are the major programmes that suffered these costs, seeing these cost increases come back from tender returns. So the council housing stock increase programme, the levelling up fund that we've talked about today. So you saw today, initially at 13.4 million for Fithler Castle site, it's coming up close to 20. And all that means is we have to go back out, secure additional funding, potentially re-tender. So that, then we saw that across Stockbridge Towns Fund, which was another sort of like, it's 25 million pounds there. Future High Streets Fund, where we've had to go and get, so we've got 15 million. We've had to go and secure another five, eight million in order to be able to deliver those schemes. So these extended tender periods, going out for extra, extra funding is what's caused really, you know, the difficulty we have in delivering and doing that, that slippage. But actually, because we've worked through the year to sort of like reduce that budget down, be more realistic, the sort of like net slippage figure itself, it's sort of like 21% as opposed to re-profiling where we've not actually started a scheme, is not bad. And, and benchmarked pretty well against, against, you know, core, other core cities. And it is, like I say, it's just a trend that we're seeing across, across the, across the piece. So nothing in the out term was unexpected to us. It was all things that we'd, trends we'd seen coming through the year. So we didn't have any particular concerns around where we out turned. I would have preferred to have got those budgets more accurately from the start. And that's what we'll continue to do, to work along with colleagues. Because I think there's a, there's that optimism in the, with programme managers and contractors that they can get on and get things done quicker. So it's just a case of working with them and trying to get them to profile those budgets a little more realistically. I think it's more a, a result of over-optimism and wanting to get on and do more that, that creates the, the impression of this larger amounts of slippage. I've summarised the funding of the programme. So it's largely, the only borrowing that we did was largely around the heart of the city and, and finalising the major sporting facilities, bond repayments. Other than that, the major, major funders were government grants. We spent quite a lot on new schools this year in terms of expanding permanently at King Eglates and at Silverdale School. So there was two, two large chunks of government grant funding that went there. And then the other major contribution obviously to HRA, Housing Revenue Account, investment into the capital infrastructure of the council, of the council housing estate. We summarised the risks at the end. And like I said, next month, what you'll see me bringing forward is really re-profiling and slipping around 70 million pounds from this year forward to get those budgets, like I say, more realistic. Just that work I've done with programme managers to try and say, let's be realistic about what we can actually deliver. So that's what you'll see coming forward. So it's, like I say, it's, it's a picture that's really replicated, like the, the issues we have on revenue across the piece, it's across the country. We're all seeing the same problems because we're all trying to deliver the same capital funding, but there's only a limited amount of contractors and supply at this time. But overall, not a position we, we, it's nothing we didn't expect in terms of the capital out turn. And something that, like I say, we'll just continue to push on to make sure those capital budgets are more realistic to help with the treasury management forecast.
Thank you Jane, thank you Damian. Councillor Levery?
Thanks Chair. Just one question on housing and repairs and maintenance. So we were categorically assured 15 months ago that the big increase in budget that they got would be kept to, to find it's now 7.7 million overspent. Has there, can you remind me, has there been, been a budget increase for this year? Over and above the 55.1 million they got last year? And if so, what are we doing to control that overspending? Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I'm just looking to see if I can find what the budget number is for this year. I would have assumed that yes, it has increased. I'm just seeing if I've got something to hand now. It looks like the budget is now 55 million. So not as significant as we'd seen the previous year's increase. I think there was an acknowledgement in the prior year that actually there wasn't sufficient budget in there. And I think all the issues that Damian's spoken about with capital delivery and the issues around capacity in the market to be able to deliver the contractors that we're using, sort of equipment, materials, et cetera. It's all that same sort of stuff that's hitting the housing repairs and maintenance budgets. There's also the issues in the roofing programme that's, you know, has also impacted on, on the revenue budget as well in terms of how the managing between the capital expenditure programme and also what's, what's going on within, within the year. Take your point and I agree with you. It is disappointing to see that we've not seen any improvement, even given an increase in budget. We have got a new interim director of housing in place now. So we would like to see some, driving some further changes and further improvements in the service delivery. This year again, we'll be introducing some further performance reporting. So, you know, hopefully we'll be seeing some of the issues being driven out through further reporting in terms of the detail of that performance. Some of that will come through to finance committee, some of it into the housing committee in general. I don't know if Philip, if you want to pick up any specific things that's, you know, in the housing service that we can pull on?
I don't think there are. I think Jane's covering most of the points in terms of the actions that we're taking, but it is an area that we continue to focus on. We're putting in place extra support for services that continue to overspend. And as we get into the quarterly monitoring, so from August, you'll see the evidence of what support has been put in place for services that have consistently overspent. So hopefully that increase in focus will help. And as Jane said, the change in how we measure performance will also support being able to spot where things are not going well sooner rather than later, so that we can take action.
Okay, can I, can I just come back on this? I think we need a better understanding of where this overspend is. And if we're subcontracting a lot of work out because we're not delivering through the core team, we need to understand why. Because this can't carry on racing away at this sort of level, it's just not tolerable.
I wonder if that can happen as part of us inviting the Chair or the Director from Housing to one of our finance briefing, we have discussed that. So maybe that's where we ask those questions. Thank you councillor Chapman.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Damian and Jane. My question is about education, transport. I wondered when we're going to actually see some action in reducing this, bearing in mind at the moment, it's costing a hundred pound per day per child, take them to school, that's how it works out. And there'll be more children joining in September. So I wondered what active measures, whether there are any being taken to reduce this cost and overspend?
A big piece of work's happening across children's services to look at the SEN delivery model in general. And it's not, you know, just transport. Whilst we do recognise that transport is a major, major financial issue for the council, the early indications are we're not seeing that coming float through into the next year's figures. As you rightly say, more children come on in September, so we've kind of accounted for full year effect. So I am expecting to see that trend continue. Some of the work that they're doing with Empower, who are the partners that are sort of working with us on, you know, having a full review of the whole SEN model. A lot of that is about stemming the future demand and it's about that active, you know, demand management and how we can sort of influence that generally to stop those numbers ever increasing. I think where you're doing an average out, you're right to do so because you would in terms of cost per head. We do, we have got a lot of outliers that are getting, you know, really, really expensive daily rates that are kind of, you know, showing the picture slightly differently. We've done a lot of work benchmarking across, across core cities as well. And what we've found is we've got a lot of single occupancy trips. So a lot of children in, in single occupancy trips. We've got the, the fleet that we have has kind of maintained at a consistent level. And the, you know, the internal fleet in terms of mini buses, they're all full, you know, and they have not really risen in terms of how we're providing transport. So over the years, as we've seen that increase in children, we've been commissioning individual taxis for, for children above that core level. And that's where we've seen the increase creeping in. When we first looked at the numbers for the first couple of months in terms of the out turn and the forecast for 2425, it is showing a significant issue. And some of the work that they're doing, hopefully will stem that demand in the future. But I'm not sure how quickly that's gonna, we're gonna see the, realise the impact in our finances. We have taken account of some of the interventions that we can do this year to try and bring that down somewhat. But I think again, it's one of that, it's watch this space again. And I think ultimately what we need to do is, is really, you know, as Philip kind of mentioned earlier, some of the areas that we're seeing those key overspends in, we're going to be doing some active recovery planning work to see how we can really bring some of this back. Particularly around where we, you know, what actions can we put in place now in terms of where we are potentially not applying the policies where we should be. So the policy might, you know, say one thing and what we've actually agreed to within the, the package is not consistent with that. So I think we need to make sure that we are being really, really rigorous with our approach to that and make sure that we're being consistent. And having that overview and benchmarking, national benchmarking picture is really helpful because it sees where we, where the issues are actually and where we can start making some of those key interventions. So I share your concerns, absolutely. And I, yeah, we, we are really pushing for some, some action in the first couple of months of this year so that we, when we present the next out turn position, it's not, I, I think, you know, to set expectations, it's probably gonna still show a, a problem. But hopefully we'll, we'll see where we're gonna be able to manage that demand down to a more manageable level and bring it back somewhere near to where we can actually afford.
Yeah, I think this is where Phipps College was going to come in because they're going to provide extra spaces instead of sending people out of town. And also it has its own transport, transport and bus service. So to get people on public transport instead of in a taxi. But if that's slowed down, obviously it's defeating the object, isn't it? Right, thank you.
Thank you councillor Phipps.
Thank you Chair. I've got a point around the lack carryforward request. Hopefully that's not skipping ahead. I think if you look for, through the reasons of why the spend hasn't been possible to be achieved, it's understandable, it's all allocated, it's just individual reasons why I've not been able to actually finish the spend up in this year. But I do think it raises an issue of capacity around the LAX. And I think that's just something we should bear in mind because sometimes there's conversations in the council about we should be delegating more to LAX. And I just think maybe this raises a bit of a red flag in that sense that if the LAX can't currently achieve their spend in a year, then maybe it's not right to be looking at putting more into that. Because there are valid reasons around that. So we've got to think about capacity when we're talking about that and having those conversations. Just thought I'd raise that. Thank you.
Thank you for that councillor Phipps. Councillor Lee?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the transport issues for young children. What, I think what you've said is that children are not following their own policies when they decide which children should have transport to school. Is that, did I mishear that?
I think it's a bit of a generalisation to say that that's applicable across the board. I think it's probably fair to say that there may be instances where we're not consistent with the application of the policy depending on, you know, who, the person that's sort of, you know, arranged the, the travel, the home-to-school travel arrangement. And I think we just need to be a little bit more rigorous with that. Because what we're seeing when we're looking at the, the trend and the finances, it's not consistent across the board. So I think that's where we're at. I don't think that it's fair to say that they're, you know, consistently not applying their own policy. That's probably not fair to say, but there's probably a fair instance where we can probably wind back where there is some areas where we're not being quite as consistent as perhaps we should be.
So does that just, is that not just transport issues? It's, it, does it cover all other overspend issues in, in children's care as well? You know, particularly like the outer area placements and complex cases?
I wouldn't like to provide a blanket comment on that really, but I mean, it's certainly, again, back with the, you know, the conversations that we are going to be having with service directors and heads of service talking about their recovery plans and how we are gonna manage budgets back within, you know, the financial envelope that they should be doing. That's absolutely the areas that we should be looking at to make sure that we are consistent with what we're saying that we should be doing, that we are doing that as well. In terms of the, you know, the, the packages that you, you mentioned, I'm, I'm not close enough to it to provide a comment on that, so it wouldn't be fair to do so. But I think that you're right to pull it up and it's probably something avenue that we absolutely need to explore to make sure that, you know, our overall approach is correct.
Just, I guess for me, it's about the scrutiny of those, of, of those policies and those, and the spend. We've lost that element in, in when we introduced the committees. There used to be a separate scrutiny board for children's services. And I just wonder how, how people are applying those scrutiny responsibilities within, with all our, within all our committees, not just children's committees as well, but adults, adult care and all the, when we all, when we've come across overspends in other, other policy areas as well, other committees as well. well, whether we've, we've thrown some of the, no, I was gonna say maybe out with a bath of water, but no, you know what I mean, we've, we've, we've lost some of that scrutiny element that was fairly rigorous at times.
I agree with your point and I think it's really, really valid feedback and I think once we, you know, as we're moving into this next year of looking at the budget, it, it's something that we do need to follow up on and I think we're talking about governance again today, aren't we, and sort of bringing further rigor and scrutiny into a lot of processes. So I think it's something that Philip and I will take away and think about how that is working in, not just in children's, but all the policy areas across the council to make sure that we, you know, we're not dropping the ball on certain things where that we know that it's gonna have a significant budget impact. So I really welcome the feedback.
Thank you. I was just gonna say that too, Jane, in terms of scrutiny, so you're absolutely correct, Mary, in asking those questions and I think myself and the finance committee have been asking very similar questions that have been fed back to the governance committee and there will be a presentation at the end of this meeting to give us a bit more information about the finance committee going forward. Councillor Hurst?
Thanks, Zehira. Yeah, I'm not going to say anything new, but I'm hopefully gonna add to the discussion. Thank you to finance officers for this report. I'm happy to say that as a, a new substitute member to this committee, none of those areas that are currently ringing alarm bells in my head are a surprise and that's because you're doing your job properly, but also it's quite alarming that the trends are there and, and as a finance committee, we haven't been able to do a deep dive and scrutinise some of those actions that are being taken to address a remedy performance because every pound that a one committee area overspends is, means a worse delivery of services elsewhere for, for the citizens of Sheffield. And I, I think we do need to, and Oze here has mentioned what we've been talking about in governance and, and widely across, across the council, but I do think that, I mean, there are three areas for me that we need to perhaps have a deep dive on in, in briefings so that we can have those conversations, not, not to pillory officers, but really just to ask them to come and give us some reassurance that, you know, that we are able as a finance committee to conduct that scrutiny and that action plans are in place to, to bring about the change that we need. And that would be my suggestion that we, as well as having a public list of, of policy areas or reports that come to us in line with the recommendations that are going to go forwards for the finance committee, we should also have that series of, what is it? Briefing agendas or scrutiny clinics, I don't know, I don't know. But we should have that list ourselves that we can put forwards, that is acted on of areas of activity within the council that we can scrutinise and do a deep dive into.
Thank you. Yeah, Philip?
Thank you. I think just on that, so we, we have sort of heard the feedback from, from the committee members over the past year and looked at how we use finance briefings during this municipal year. We are looking at a forward plan for those meetings that will encompass bringing directors and chairs of committees to those sessions for those key areas where we've already identified. We know that social care placements, send transport, homelessness and housing and repairs and maintenance are the key issues that are causing budgetary issues at the moment and those are the ones that are gonna get the focus this year to make sure that we understand what's going on, understand the drivers of those overspends and what we can do about them. I think it's also fair to say that there is action happening in lots of those areas already, but it takes a long time to turn the dial on some of those issues. So things like homelessness and supporting people who find themselves in a homelessness situation, providing housing units isn't something we can sort of turn on overnight. It takes a while for us to get things in place to be able to see those numbers go down. That does include reviewing policies and agreeing what those policies should be. And the same for school transport. If we were to amend the policy for that, the leading time for that is quite significant. The policy's already been agreed for 24, 25 and so if any change in policy potentially will impact September 25 onwards unless we were to unpick the decision that's already been taken around policy. So some of those decisions will take a while to filter through to actual tangible financial savings, but there are action plans in place for lots of those areas of the council where there are overspends. Part of the role of the committee as well as the role of us as officers will be to scrutinise those recovery and action plans and hold people to account to deliver them.
And I think from September onwards, other policy committees will be coming to finance briefings to update us on the work that's going on in their areas as well. Councillor Dodd?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you again for your report. I just wanted to come back to the question that I started with in, in the previous section and I support colleagues making detailed inquiries into the children's issues, but I wanted to just ask, I know it's a smaller overall volume, but I was quite surprised to see the 55% slippage in, in Wasteland Street Service, in Wasteland Street scene and I wondered whether the, the challenges that that service area that, that is facing are the same as for other areas as in procurement and labour supply and, and all of that kind of thing, or if there's something else that we need to be aware of that's causing a delay in the fly tipping and the city centre streetworks because it does feel like a particularly high level for one area. Thanks.
Hi, yeah, just bear with me a sec. Yeah, there's only a couple of schemes in that area and actually it's, it's just been, the fly tipping one is gonna be delivered this year and again, it's sort of a victim of, some of these are a victim of the, the way it's reported in that some of this activity will have taken place already. So because we draw the line at March for the financial year reporting actually, because capital delivery carries on across years, like that, that scheme I think was largely gonna be delivered in the first quarter of this year. So I think some of these are just a, an effect of that, that I say the Wasteland Street one looks particularly high as well because there was the, the city centre safety scheme in there, which some of that money was, has previously been diverted to deliver another, another scheme on Carver Street. So there's been a, a switch around in how the funding was used and it's just one of those where we didn't realign the budget before the year end. So that, I know it looks particularly high, but that's just because obviously we present all the information in a consistent manner and unfortunately that one looks, it looks terrible in terms of percentages, but it's, it's not a, it's not a specific issue to that scheme. Other than I would say that the city centre development around transport is, is a lot of it's hinged on the Transforming Cities Fund scheme, which has been planned for a long time now. So there's, there's a lot of interdependencies around transport in the city centre. So the Future High Streets Fund that we're delivering has got to link in with the Transforming Cities Fund programme, which is, you know, which has got several elements. So it's got a bit coming in from the, from Kellam, it's got the South West Bus Corridors. So there's, when you're trying to deliver something around transport in the city centre, there's so many moving pieces that often one will have to slip in order to accommodate another and I think that's where we are around some of that city centre safety work. It's trying to align it with everything else that's happening at the same time.
Thank you very much, Damian. I mean, slippage on the capital programme has improved from 50% to 9%, but we need to continue to make ongoing improvements to minimise slippage in the capital programme. And I agree with you, we have to be really realistic in terms of what we can deliver. But Jane and Damian, thank you very much. There is any further questions or comments? Oh, sorry, councillor Everie, did you want to come in? Councillor Everie?
Thanks, Chair. Just going back to local area committees and following on from what councillor Phipps said, last year we had additional pots of money for cost of living and for fly tipping. The fly tipping one is really difficult to manage because you've got to work out how you're gonna do a solution to, in a particular area and then engineer a solution and put it in. And I think we, we found that there were a number of slippages in terms of fly tipping projects because it really wasn't the time to get, to get them in. So the, the, my concern with LAX is where there may be a double slip. And I think we've got some cases where we've had a two-year slip on some of these things and really we shouldn't be in that situation with lack funding. Yes, it can slip a year because it can carry over into next year, but not the year after. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. So this report does contain recommendations, normally it's a note only, but because there is some carry forwards, are we all agreed on the recommendations? Yeah, that's all agreed, that's unanimous. Thank you very much and that's all for the items on today's agenda, but there will be a presentation from Robert in regards to the governance of the finance committee. Thank you very much for your attendance.